To distribute it to our causes. The employers seem to think that that money will not get distributed. They just reduce the price of car park. Breckland responsible for just under 2,000 car park spaces. They charge £200 an hour for their own car park spaces. They can make £1,000 or £3,000 a year. This Breckland saving £5,000 is the cost to maintain a car park. That's true as I said, but it's not true because selling costs £200,000. The other £200,000 is made up of business breaks which I'm for. And I'm pretty sure that that money is actually being charged anyway. So the Breckland town councils are written here today and the town council. Can you plead with Breckland council that what they're doing is a great mistake? Charging the people for part of that.
Thank you, John. I'm in, I was here on Tuesday, it's a Tuesday on Thursday. I mean, I saw you. Thank you very much for those figures you sent through. I could reaffirm that the town council is definitely against the introduction of car park charges. We've sent a letter in and your Breckland councillors here are also against the car park charges. We're having a briefing Monday, the 2nd of December in Deirham for Breckland town council. So we'll let you know more information when we get it. Next, please, Rob.
Hiya, you know who I am. If relief you've gotten from Wallace Jambu, which is said. I passed some information across to Sonia, who I interviewed recently about Breckland council. A few years ago, they usurped that design and took it into Breckland council's jurisdiction, if you like. It's come about that Breckland are actually a private company, registered on Dunlop Bradstreet in the US. Their registration number 23261384. So basically what they've done is they've usurped land from the townsfolk, put it into a private business and now they're going to profit from that business. So that's just something that you might want to take to your meetings. Which leads me on to, so basically they're a non-governmental organisation. Okay, now go back to non-governmental organisations and in relation to the climate crisis, which I've spoken about lots and lots of times. Each of the companies, each of the organisations that you guys are getting information from are also NGOs, non-governmental organisations. Okay, so the private enterprises that are advising the public and partly then using public money to fund what is now going to be their future business. So what I would like to put to the council is, I've got lots and lots of evidence. I've also, I've shared already with some of you guys. Some are taking it in by email and they're getting back to me. I've got lots and lots of evidence where I can prove that there is a man-made climate crisis. You guys are yet to prove to me that there is a man-made climate crisis. So what I'm going to suggest is, or I hope we can do, is either I can give you a presentation and show you my evidence or you need to de-escalate and undeclare your climate emergency.
Thank you, Philip. I did tell you, speak to you in the last meeting. And I will talk to you about the climate thing, but it'll have to be after Christmas on a plane because...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'll be one to one, right?
If there's any councillors here, because I've already started sharing information. If there's any other councillors here that want me to send them information, then I'm up to about 92 separate documents now. Where I can back my claim.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Next, anyone else?
Something that we had something with the town clerk the other day that I just wanted to say. First question is, do you know it's illegal to use a legal name? And do you know that we're committing fraud day on day places? And that is through our taxes. Because they fund wars, child trafficking and child abuse. And I'm going to tell you how all this came about, if I can quickly get it in in three minutes.
Absolutely.
1913, the Federal Reserve Act was born. They had all the people, J.D. Morgan, the bankers, Rockefeller, Rothschild, Kurt, called Edward Maddelhouse. They took the train up to Jekyll Island, blacked out owners and everything. And they said what they want to do is create money out of thin air and see what they did. Fast forward to 1923, when the social security number was created, which is our national insurance number. That act used an account number to a trust called the Sesterke B Trust, which was created in 1666, when the Great Fire of London was on playing and everything. What they done, I must say, Landgras, but everyone put their gladdles together and created this trust and which they said they were getting everything back, which they never did. We fast forward to 1933, when Roosevelt got the power, I should say, he was the president. What they done, so the dollar was backed by gold, but they removed the gold. And again, yes, they told the people, handle your gold in. And they write up these no permissory notes, which is our cash today. But what they also did, they backed the dollar and that with our energy through our taxes. Because at the time when the war was building up, the people were putting in money. And they used this idea to use that money, our hard work energy that we put in daily for our taxes, the county tax, the pay you earn tax. Every tax that is being paid is, you know, for funding wars and everything. And this goes into the birth certificate, our birth certificate or death certificate as it's known. Because we are lost at sea presumed dead. What happens when your mother, the mother, she was birthed, instead of actually us coming out actually to a normal life, they created what was called a legal fiction. You may have signed it as a straw man, but it's a legal fiction. And what they did, once the car was made and the vehicle was called...
Okay, that's good.
Is that it?
Yes, three minutes, Jeff. No, that's... 30 seconds more, but...
Yeah, so what they did is, the aftermath that came out, they floated that out of the stock exchange. So we are worth millions, that's what it could worth millions. And we are lost dead at sea. If you look at all the things that talk about as opposed to water and things, you know, you're drowning then, the birth canal, the river banks, the waters and the drops and that kind of thing. Everything's to do with it, sportsmanship, apprenticeship, you know, everything, you know, is to do with it. And here I've got for the town clerk and yourself to read about BCC RSS, which is the first initiative, the Cilis Rebus, Sixty-Ninth, who tells you exactly what is going on and why it is causing what we're doing daily, because of this legal fiction.
Okay, thank you.
And that proves that...
Parsons just go, you bring him round. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Right, 43324, declaration of any disposable, peculiar interest base. None? 43424, the mayor's report. I will agree with John. Yet again, we could be really proud of the residents of it. On the behaviour, remember on Sunday, it was really well attended, it was really good stuff. And I think that if actually changed it slightly and actually marched with the rest of the organisations, was a bonus and worked really well. There are one or two things we've got to look into for next year, but we're looking into that. Quite a busy time, I went to the church in Breckland to lay wreaths for Detective Agin and Polish American Avenue died. That was really a heartwarming thing. There were several people there and to see the sacrifice made by not only British, but European, Asian, Indian, et cetera, is, you know, speaks volumes. Okay, and I'm looking forward to this Friday when I've got to do the electric light, Christmas light bridge on. Thank you very much. Any questions? No. Right, town council representatives on the body. Okay, councillor Jane James, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks, Major. My work is done. Super, thank you very much. So Jane James, I am the Norfolk County councillor for Thetford East Division. So thank you to councillor Wood for his correspondence regarding the persistent parking issues, which is never easy to stay overnight, on Old Croxton Road. Sadly, we have residents who are experiencing difficulties using the footpath due to vehicles blocking it. For reference, this area does not have any legal order restrictions for parking. Therefore, it becomes a matter for the police if there is an obstruction being caused. I mention it here so that councillor McDonald, we can pick it up hopefully at the next safer Thetford Action Group meeting. So we can work collaboratively with the police to resolve this issue. Positive news, feasibility funding has been secured for the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan opportunities in Thetford. And commissioning is underway so that we can look at options and next steps. This is significant for all residents to be able to move around the town, however they choose to do so. You'll have all noticed our gritting fleet out and about on Norfolk's roads with the recent change in the weather. You can check which roads are on the council's gritting routes for this season on the map And on that same map, which I know will be of interest to residents, you can find the location of around 2,000 grit bins across the county that are filled by the county council and which people can use on public pavements, cycle paths and roads to help everyone get around safely this winter. At the end of last week, I was lucky enough to accompany members of our digital team to Birmingham for the Smarter Working Live Award, where we were shortlisted with four nominations in three categories. I'm delighted to realise that our Tech Skills for Life initiative was recognised as the winner in the digital inclusion category. I have to say, this has been a passion of mine since...
My fault.
What's that, hesitation or repetition?
No, that is... Me and technology.
So yeah, it's been a passion of mine since I became involved a bit earlier last year. The programme that people involved had made a real difference to the quality of like the thousands of Norfolk residents. The personal impact stories the team regularly share with me are so often heartwarming and inspirational. Why is this relevant to Thetford? Well, in the library, because of receiving additional funding, we're now delivering this project here in Thetford. Have to say, hot off the press, congratulations to the team at Norwich Road Academy for their Ofsted inspection results published literally today. They've been considered good in the areas of quality of education, behaviour and attitude, leadership and management and their early years provision. And frankly, outstanding in relation to personal development. This demonstrates the significance that the academy has been on since its last inspection. And I know we're all very passionate about educational standards in the towns. Unfortunately, picking up on Mr Hassy's point, my next surgery at the library clashes with that briefing at Deirham regarding those car parking charges that Breckland District Council are looking to introduce. I'm sure that you, the council and the public will agree that actually my time is better spent representing residents' concerns and views at that meeting. So if anybody does need a lift, more than happy to drive you over there. So my next surgery for residents will be 10:30 AM, Saturday, the 11th of January next year. And finally, as part of my cabinet role at Norfolk County Council, I'm looking forward to greeting our county farm tenants to county hall next month at our annual tenants evening. It won't have escaped anyone's notice that farming has been, shall we say, at the forefront of many people's minds recently. And I'm incredibly privileged to have this valued Norfolk asset as part of my portfolio, helping ensure opportunities for entrant and progression farming in Agfine County. Happy to take any questions that any councillors have been hitting with permits.
Any questions for councillor James? No? Vic?
No, no, just a...
Oh, no. We should probably go back. Vic, did you have a question?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Right, we'll go round the table then. Oh, sorry, councillor Terry.
Book by name and size. Precedents. Spain. Show and then speak. Listen. Right. As a member of Breckland Youth Advisory Board, I attend the Coates Exeter Conference held at Charles Borough Centre on Wednesday, the 16th of November, in aid of Norfolk Youth Against bullying. The conference was designed and run by young people from the Norfolk Youth Advisory Board to feature youth-led workshops and training with research-based presentations and expert guest speakers, which included Tim Oving, whom along with two other dads founded a Papyrus Charity Club, which is a suicide prevention charity. Sadly, Tim and his two dads all lost their teenage daughters who took their own lives. Bullying is not just about physical violence, it's also about psychological violence. And bullying is a learned behaviour. It's up to us to teach our children and some other adults how to be kind and respectful to others. Also, I attended an excellent play put on by the Magic Floor Productions with Breckland Youth Advisory Board at the Carnegie a few weeks back, titled 'It's Behind You', based on true life experiences of young Thetford people getting involved in county lines. The play was hard-hitting and emotional and needs to be supported so it can be taken around our schools. Primary school children are seen as easy targets because they are less likely to be caught. It is my intention to arrange meetings with the principals of our junior schools to look at ways to prevent this crime.
Thank you, anyone need questions for councillor Terry? Okay, round the table, any more, beside, no? No, Vic? Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Land.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Along with other interested agencies as well as councillor Cambridge, I visited the proposed site of a footbridge that is an existing path alongside Lums Bridges with the Fish Pass. In a very welcome development, planning permission that was originally withdrawn will now be resubmitted and we hope for a better outcome. Well over a year ago, this council approved funding for a container to be used by friends of ours, the River Group, as storage. Having been passed to Breckland for siting permission, I was extremely disappointed to learn in the last few days they will not allow the proposed site to be used. No explanation was given for the long delay and frankly, I don't think it's in any way acceptable. So that's something I'm going to chase. Following multiple conversations with residents on the Abbey Estate, I've contacted Norfolk County Council via our MP's office to ask for clearance and tidy up the alleyways between houses. They were frankly a mess. I'm delighted to say that work has already started on that project. So that's a real result for the residents of the Abbey. And as ever, I've been helping residents across the town by providing assistance via food bank, fuel bank and household referral grant applications. Thank you.
Any questions for, any question for councillor Land? Sorry, I'll be gone. That's right, councillor McDonald, then, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to give our report back on the Safer Thetford Action Group. We attended the Safer Neighbourhood Action Panel on Monday, the 18th of November, which was this time held in Wheaton. There was a large turnout from Thetford, which was really welcome from the public because without people attending those meetings, our voice is lost to the rest of the county. So things that did come up from this area in particular were antisocial behaviour on some of the estates. In one particular case, it was about St John's. Excessive speeding, the community speed watch are really trying to get going in two locations at the moment and are in efforts to link up. The SAM2 was mentioned and they said what a great thing it is that the council provide the SAM2 and move it around to different locations. It was highlighted, however, that there is a problem with what we do when we give the information to the police. It comes as raw data and the police, it would appear, don't have the time to look at that raw data. So one of the members of public has offered to transfer that into a graph mechanism that they can read quicker. So we're going to hopefully take them up on that on behalf of the town because it really does paint a picture of the planet across all our streets. On that note, there was a lot of pressure on safer streets, whether it be on the road or on the pavements across the region. And I know that this is something that we go on about a lot in Thetford, particularly with those pavements that are overgrown. In fact, only in the last week or so, I met with councillor Terry and we're looking to try and get something done about some of our worst affected areas, where pavements have gone from almost 1.5 metres to half a metre. So it's something that we're going to chase up and try and push through wherever we can and give information to people about the fact that pavements are for people, not for plants. On another note, the street wardens have done a great job throughout the town. So those who have seen them probably don't realise the amount of great work they've done in the background. They've been the eyes and the ears for the police. They've been able to talk to local residents and actually find out what issues are. Unfortunately, their funding finishes in March 25. So STAG have written to both the PCC, Breckland District Council in an effort to try and see if there's any way that we can either extend further funding or perhaps get them a different contract because their value to this town and it is only this town that gets them is immense. I would like to encourage the town council at a later date to do something the same and hopefully we can write a letter recommending that also. Finally, the format for the Safer Neighbourhood Action Panels, which had only changed in the last year, is going to change again. This time, they're going to have the three monthly meetings. But now they're going to have a panel meeting after the public meetings to decide on the neighbourhood priorities. Which for those who remember, it sounds awfully like what STAG used to do anyway. So I guess the wheel turns and I can only see it as a positive outcome. Once these meetings are done, the police are going to make more of an effort to report back on what those particular community concerns are rather than giving generic briefs after a bit of feedback. I'll link these dates available for later. But the next SNAP meetings are on the 8th of January at Munford, the 10th of April in Thetford, the 9th of July in Oxford and the 7th of October in Thetford. So we at least have got our two meetings back again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Question, councillor Land?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you, councillor Macdonald. I completely agree with you regarding the value of the town, and so they have done a phenomenal job. Mr Shaw, the next full council of Breckland, I will be part of that, I will be at notice. Thank you, try and get someone.
Councillor Terry? It's broken. It's open now, it's open again.
On the subject of antisocial behaviour, I believe this Thursday's General Purposes Committee Meeting at Breckland, Breckland are looking at introducing PSPOs across the whole of Breckland regarding antisocial behaviours. All known.
Councillor Terry?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to add on to councillor McDonald's point, the street wardens are absolutely invaluable. I've had the pleasure of chatting to both of them on multiple occasions and the response on the street has been great to them as well. As much as I completely agree, the letter from the council supporting their extension would be great. Also, if we could reach out to them and get them to provide us with some words on what they do, which we can read out to the public and share. I've seen Breckland do it on their Facebook, but if we could reach out, get some information, we'll break down and appreciate what they do, what powers they have, so we can share that as well, I think that'd be great.
Thank you. Well, we've got a little bit of a meeting here on Thursday beyond antisocial behaviour, meeting with other agencies on Thursday AM, which includes district council, police, schools and children's agencies. Any councillor wishing to join? Get in touch with the clerk. Okay, Mr Redham, councillor Redham, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a word if I may about the fortunes of the Charles Borough Centre, which amongst other things offers a good location for groups, the Dexter Park, for example, and the possibility of tea, coffee, meals, if that's ordered, if they're ordered in advance. Sadly, however, the kitchen and the cafe, which is known technically as the engine room, is under closure because it's losing money. And I would encourage everybody present in the room to think of ways in which they might be able to make use of the facilities there. It's the old story, use them or lose them. And that's the danger at the Charles Borough Centre. They are hoping that they can find time to take over that part of the operation and run it privately. But in the meantime, if anyone has any ideas for activities there that would involve the consumption of food and drink, then please let Charles Borough know that there is support for them and a need for them around the town. Thank you.
Councillor Peters?
Can I, what I remember, my dismay at the closure of Peers River, I volunteered there as a volunteer on community mills, which was a great thing, they were funded. It cost a lot of money, but there weren't a lot of money on it. But it was a brilliant idea because it brought the community into the centre and, you know, they could share views, share stuff, share a mill. So if there is anything that can happen, I'd like to see them go back home because it's available, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This morning, I attended the Greater Thetford Partnership along with councillor Land for their quarterly meeting. We had presentations from Transport East talking about the long-term evolution of the A11 and also the constraints around the Ealing North Junction. There's talk about the east-west rail being accelerated. However, any further service delivery towards Norwich will be constrained by that Ealing North Junction. And that is a can, it keeps getting kicked down the road, as I suggested this morning. It's really key to unlocking any further services that we may get from a transport segment available. There is hope that it may be considered under the next review, but it is about £500 million which needs to be done. But compared to some of the other speeds, it's not a great deal. But it does open up the Felixstowe container traffic through Ealing as well as the passenger services. So it's really keen that we keep pressing for that, so to unlock the potential for Thetford. As councillor James indicated, we had an update on the Norfolk recycling. Again, it's a paper exercise, we have some money to take it on to the next stage, but I don't think it's too much in terms of delivery money that's going to be coming forward. The idea is to get these shelf ready so if funding does arrive, they can be cherry picked and brought forward for consideration. I think with the Thetford £20 million, which I think now has been earmarked as an option there, that we could tap into some of that, deliver some of the logistical necessary links that we need to put in, which I did highlight some of the missing links that were being considered on the existing Northern County Council proposals. I will keep the pressure up on that. And finally, the update on the Sue, this is saying the urban extension. I did make reference to an earlier question I had put forward, probably a couple of years ago now, about the lack of cemetery provision for the extension to the Sue. We all know as a town council, we're reaching our limited burials and the constraints that we have on our existing cemetery. I was assured a couple of years ago that there was a kind of green burial or some kind of cemetery provision that was being looked at. That all seems to be ran to a halt. So may I ask the clerk who was present there this morning to follow that up? Because I think with the volume of houses that are going up in that area, you need to have cemetery provision for the wider town. Despite clearly Croxton and Kilmarnock by that with existing churchyards. And we're running out of time and so we needed to get that moving. Any questions?
Any questions for councillor Ray? Councillor Peters?
Stuart, can I ask that with the town side, can we get together and have a chat sometime to discuss all of this? And could we say any other things, because I actually feel the whole, we won't be sitting till the end yet because there isn't further property yet. But anyone who's got ideas, just, you know, I'm interested, we'll just get together, have a chat, have a coffee. Because I would like to see these projects put forward rather than what Breckland is.
Okay, councillor Brett, do you want to say anything?
It's on, you're on, it's on.
It's on? Oh, isn't it open again? Oh, yes, it is.
I love technology. Sorry, that technology doesn't like me, I'm a little... Now, just a quick reminder of, I see this as just the end of the DCE project, which part of the council is. the council, and just to remind people about their upcoming event on Carnegie, on the 8th of December, at 2 o'clock, the 25th anniversary, and I'll be first meeting, we must come along as possible, not the families and children involved, but anybody from the public. And there is a small charge, and it all goes towards the music project, which there are many kids that can't afford to play music, and would otherwise not be able to participate, we can think on extra regular activity for their support. So anybody with a bit of spare time and a bit of change, please, to come along on the concert on 8th December, thank you.
Thank you very much. Me and the wife will be there. Or the wife and I, sorry, will be there. I've just got a couple of quick things, and nuts and bolts of being a councillor, I think a bit pedantic. We have had a work with Circo about clearing the alleyways from the upper fur road to the top of the road. They've done that. Flagship of myself in a battle over some garages, then boarded up some of ours from. We have also removed three abandoned cars from Saxon Place, El Road Garage Block, and Standingford Garage Block. You know, it is sometimes I keep that Circo doing the job, sometimes it doesn't. It's what it is, but that's the nuts and bolts of being a councillor, it's a thing you have to do. Okay. Anyone got any questions for me? No, thank you. Okay, move on then. Right, anyone got any questions for the town clerk? How are you getting away so light? Oh, we have, councillor Spirit, sorry.
Just a quick, I read through your report, thank you, I just want to sort of publicly shout out, I don't think many people sort of understand the workload that you inherited and the workload that Alan took on as well, and between the two of you, you're doing a fantastic job, it's commendable ever for both of you. Quick question, any update on the scaffolding? And I'll just leave that there, thank you.
It may have been in the minutes, I just wanted to hear it. The contract is on site, obviously there's a little bit of weather dependency. We have regular meetings, they are scheduled to finish very early in February. They have some worse damage than initial inspections did. We have a meeting tomorrow, a project meeting, from 12 to 11:00, and I'll send that through the town clerk to all the councillors who've detected, if there's any delays, but at the moment, we're working for the best we can, February.
Next, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. 43724, progress on actions from previous meetings. Anyone got any questions on any progress on that?
Sorry. The response to the appointment of the chair of the Thetford Town Board, it still says it's still in progress. Can I suggest that that's now taken out? We've, it's over a year since that appointment, if we haven't done anything now, is there any point in doing it now?
Right, 43824, committee meeting, we view a proposed calendar meeting until April 25. It's at 10 o'clock, yeah, me, 10 o'clock.
You've done that, I've got some up in that, but I'll let you do your bit first.
So I just want to go.
Just, I've got a little bit of a concern over the cancelling of the Heritage and Events meeting on the 15th of January. I do understand that there is a heavy workload, but we've already cancelled the December one. If we cancel the January, and then we have February and March, we've got a lot of work coming up with the VE Day, VJ Day celebrations, and we're not going to get a chance to put that into committee before presenting, so could I suggest we cancel the February and we keep the January? I mean, maybe I'm on my own.
No, I'm open to suggestions. The other item is that we work on, I did suggest that we cancel corporate services, but because of budgeting, we need to actually have corporate services in January as well. So if you, I can make a recommendation that we keep them two dates in and just move the February ones, and then if you can vote on that, that would be great.
Okay, any other questions? We propose a question.
Yeah, I'm proposing that we change the meeting dates, but we keep in the January dates for corporate services, heritage and events, and community and environment, and we move the February ones.
Okay. Councillor Brett, a second. All in favour? Anyone against? Any extensions? One extension. Okay, thank you. 43924, community engagement to discuss any and agree any consultational media release required. Anyone got any thoughts? Okay. 44024, exclusion of press and public. To consider resolving a pursuant to the public body's admission to Meeting Act 1960, the press and the public be excluded, any remaining items of business under grounds of publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Do we all agree? Anyone? Yeah, all in favour? Thank you very much. Thank you for turning up.